So just let me know, oh, there we go, we're recording now, so we're on, okay, right?
Ready when you are.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody, I'll call this meeting to order, roll call, please.
Director Sewell?
Here.
Director Grata?
Here.
Director Duncan?
Here.
Vice President Martin?
Here.
President Wright?
Here.
Thank you, we have quorum.
Thank you, rules of procedure, Mr. Pinkney.
Yes, the board has adopted rules of procedure for conducting its meetings, and so I'm just gonna go over some of the more, some of the key provisions of those rules. All noticed meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the board. The president of the board decides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The president is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the president. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the president as the presiding officer. No member of the board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a board meeting. In order to ensure the orderly progress of board meetings, the board president regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you. Dora, you just said we had no public, is that what you said, so?
That is correct.
Okay, so we won't have any public input today, I'll go to employee recognition. Human Resources Report. I'll turn it over to you, Arden, for the moment.
I mean, yeah, sometimes we go through this, but I mean, during the pandemic, it's probably okay just to, you know, mention them right now and discuss it. You know, I didn't realize Chris Jacobson was here a year or two before me. He's sixteen, he's got seventeen years in. But it is kind of amazing and great, great employee. Been such a good attribute to the district. Then you have, I can't believe Ciara and Oriana have been here four years, wow. Time is flying when you're enjoying yourself, I guess. And then we got Rita and then Christopher Shanahan is in here a year. But a special compliment to Oriana for obtaining her master's degree in human resources. So, my compliments.
Congratulations, Oriana.
Thank you.
I'm working on getting you your own bathroom.
Arden, you forgot Julio Martinez.
Oh, excuse me, Julio, two years.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure he got mentioned. Okay, the next item would be COVID-19 update.
Well, I think what I'd do is start out with the local info first, which is that, you know, the numbers are down substantially at Eisenhower. And so, you know, that is good news, that's sort of following the trend nationally. And we are, however, expecting some uptick. We are, I shouldn't say that Eisenhower is, because of the, the Super Bowl weekend. And the vaccines are hopefully going to be rolling out, I just saw that the president has, I think, has a contract out for 200 million more vaccines. So we'll see if that really impacts us, that seems to really have an impact. And so let's keep our fingers crossed that they can start getting those out more efficiently. On the local level, the staff is continuing to look for ways to be more efficient and maintain compliance with the COVID-19 guidelines. Today's Zoom meeting is another example of the board of directors are at the top of the video conferencing here, which should help the president, Nancy Wright, identify these individuals as they want to, when they want to speak. Staff is following the national trends. We don't have any current positive tests. The big announcement, I think, today is that we planned on bringing everybody back into the office on February 22nd. And that is still in place, so. That'll follow the staff requirements. Practice. We wear masks while in the open areas. And in the vehicle.
Arden, you got a feedback going on there. So do I.
It could be any one of our speaker systems feeding back through our own microphone, so if everybody muted except for Arden, I think it would go away.
Oh, okay, that's a good point, maybe that's true.
Thanks, thanks, Steve, yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, try it again, Arden.
All right. That seemed to work, doesn't it? Can you hear me? Okay, I guess you gotta nod, because I can't hear you now. All right, so once we're back, like I said, we're gonna follow the guidelines. The fourth one here that I haven't mentioned yet was the CDC and the Cal OSHA policies and requirements are the ones that require that we put new things in place. We have a self-assessment form that we fill out every day. And I think thanks to Brian and Oriana and my staff in general, we are, I think, very compliant with all of the requirements set out by the CDC and Cal OSHA. When we do get back in, we have looked at all of the social distancing requirements that we need. And the only one that might be a surprise to you if you ever come into the office is the fact that we're gonna put one of the customer service representatives in the lobby area. And we're gonna equip that with a phone, now that would put all four of the customer service people in the same vicinity and yet be separated by the distancing necessary. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, award a contract for Desert Willows Water Line Replacement Project and execute a cooperative agreement with the Desert Willows property owners.
President Wright, before we move on, I apologize, Vice President Martin had a question, but he's having trouble unmuting himself.
Sorry, I can't hear you. What'd she say?
President, Vice President Martin has a question or a comment that he's having trouble unmuting himself.
Oh, okay, thank you.
He's still muted.
For me.
Okay.
Arden, you indicated that everybody would be back, staff would be back on February 22nd, does that also include future board meetings?
That is open to what you all prefer, yes, we will, we will consider that if that's what you would like. You know, that's up to the board, yes, we do have the Plexiglas there, we can, once we know that that's your preference, we will prepare the boardroom.
Not in the requirement that everybody naturally have to show up for a board meeting, it could, if you prefer to stay home, you could do it, you know, telephonically and stuff, but for those of us that would like to be there in person, I think that's a terrific idea.
Can we do that without masks now? I mean, is that, you know, I know that before you had to have masks in public at all times, so I'm not sure.
You know, CVWD has their meetings in-house in their boardrooms. They've got an empty chair between each director and they still wear a mask in there, so. And it makes it hard to understand them, it really does.
Conversely, when you watch the County Board of Supervisors meeting, they're separated and only about half of them wear their masks, including the public that gets up to speak, which they allow into the boardroom to make public comments, so. Anyway.
Well, we'll talk about it, it won't be this month, that's for sure, it might not even be next month, but we'll.
Timing wise, I just want to add one thing to that. It was at this meeting one year ago when I didn't come and was criticized for failing to show up because the.
I didn't.
Yeah, well, I know, but a particular director did. My point is that there were fourteen positive cases in Riverside County one year ago today. And since then, we've had close to 4,000 dead. And today, another forty and another hundred and some positive cases in the Coachella Valley. I think that the board, you know, I have no problem, anyone that wants to meet down there should be able to, but there should be no criticism of those that don't wish to participate. And I'd like to remind everyone that there is zero, zero air movement in that room, there's no fresh air coming in and no filtration going out, there's not a, it compresses cold air into the room, but there's no, you won't find a air conditioning, what is it?
Return air deck?
Yeah, it doesn't circulate fully, it only pushes cold air in, I looked around in there. Assistant General Manager Macy was there that day with me and it's a real problem that I saw, and I, you know, they may have found some magic way to get around that, but it felt like to me that anybody that came in that room was gonna infect everybody in the room. And my feeling is that to force all of our staff into that room or into that kind of a situation, just so we can have, some of us can have the convenience and the fun of having a board meeting, to me is.
Well, I don't think we had ever planned it that way, Steve, so, but thank you for your comments. I don't think we'd ever do that, anyway, force people, anyway, okay, thanks for coming, so now I will move on to item number three. Is that where we're at? Yeah, item number three, Desert Willows, I'll turn it over to you, General Manager.
Okay, well Danny's gonna give you some details and I will try not to give the entire presentation in my introduction, but I do want to mention that today, this action will really contain three parts, one is, we need to award the contract to get this system in, the next is that we need to enter into a cooperative agreement with regard to the paving, and then, and the other thing is, we're gonna need to augment the budget, which will be reimbursed, doesn't mean we spend the money out of our, all the money out of our coffers. And then the water improvement component here is recommended by engineering and operations for a couple, two or three reasons here, all three reasons, one, to reduce the operational cost to the district, to provide water service to this area. And then we want to reduce the potential for a catastrophe, which could, you know, which could result in a substantial cost to the district or even damage to the property or the lives. And then we just also want to prevent any unnecessary interruptions in service, which is always an inconvenience to the people. The cooperative paving agreement will result in the savings also to both parties. And if you, when you, after you hear Danny's presentation and you have more questions on that, you can, you can ask for some clarification and he'll address that in his presentation. And it should be noted also that Desert Willows is the one that came to us to enter into this agreement. And we would not have done it if it wasn't extremely feasible for us. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Danny and he can explain the project. Danny?
Thank you, Arden. I still have a feedback I can hear, is that somebody else's mic on?
I can't hear a feedback, you hear a feedback now?
I did hear just a second ago. Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board, if there is no feedback, I'll continue, thank you, Arden, for that, I'm not sure, let me see if I can backfill some of the details. The project is about 7,600 linear feet of ductile iron pipe that we're gonna be installing in the area of Desert Willows Mobile Home Park, it's south of Pearson Boulevard between Villa Loretto and Atlantic or Golden Eagle, whatever you'd like to call that area. And it consists of pipeline replacement, as Arden said, in Pearson, connection points in Pearson, and also within the development. The part that I guess I'll likely backfill and not repeat is, in the cooperative agreement, the the cost to pave the entire paving area is, or outside of our requirement, is borne on the developer, or on this case, the development. They came to us, as Arden said, and we have the cooperative agreement that was put together with the assistance of SBMP and John and his staff. And there is a savings, or in this case, a win-win for the district, that is, we are still paying for our share of pavement within that development, but we are paying, recognizing the economies of scale, if you will, and paying for it at a lower unit cost, but that overall is a win situation for the developer, it came in from preliminarily, when we discussed preliminary costs in the beginning, it was just south of $600,000. And the numbers came in at 310, our component or our share is around $57,000 mark. And then how we come back up to the $295,000 mark that's outlined in the staff report is there are soft costs and other testing things, items that would come with that, construction management inspection. So they're gonna pay for their share of that project for this bid alternative. Those are probably the details, I think, that are important to understand, besides what Arden provided, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Danny, any board members have a question? Okay, Steve?
You went over the cost sharing on the pavement and explained that well, could you just briefly touch on the the cost of the entire project and what we're doing there? It seemed like it got up to 2 million or just under, or was that? I thought it went from, it was 1.6 or 1.5 and now it's 1.9 something, am I wrong about that?
No, you're not necessarily wrong about the cost of the project, now, the budget augmentation component that you're speaking about is correct. So what we're asking for kind of consideration is the board to award a contract for My apologies, there is a typo there, there's a comma instead of a period, but that is meant to be 50 cents. With contingency, as we always do with construction projects, there's a lot of unknowns when you deal with underground and things aren't perfect as they may seem, obviously with plans, that's not a dig at our design engineer, because I know they're on the phone, on the call, but it's just, this nature, it's just the nature of the beast. But with contingency, we're talking about $1,667,489.40 and 45 cents, so that's the common practice. We also have we also have to cover the additional soft costs that, and we also have to cover some other ancillary items in this project that we would normally do, so what would happen at the end of the day, there is a request to augment this to 1.99 million. And that is to cover the, some of the inflation, to cover the cost of the bid alternative that we are partnering with the Desert Willows POA, and that's also to cover any contingencies, we may use the contingencies, we may not use any of it. We will be reimbursed as it's outlined in the cooperative agreement from the POA for all costs associated with the work that has been asked for. Or been asked to partner with, which is the paving. So, I hope I covered your question.
Okay, any other board members have a question for Danny? Okay, thank you, Danny.
You're welcome, Madam President.
So we will now go on down to number four, Make the Connection Financial Assistance Program. General Manager, would you tell us why it's not on the consent agenda as usual? Hey, Arden, you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I apologize. We do have one item here that goes above the sort of $6,000 limit. And that is because this particular area requires some special work. And Danny can get into the details, I don't think I even have them here with me, but Danny explained those to me when we talked about it. So we thought it would be best if we took it out of the consent agenda and shared with you that it's allowable, we have gone over the limit of the $6,000 ceiling that we usually require. And, you know, and basically, that's the only difference, is that the loan agreement and everything else is the same, and we've done it on many, many cases, and this has really helped us to sort of encourage people to sign up a little earlier or to connect, okay?
Yes.
He wants to add to that, but that's essentially all there is to it.
It's helped the customers out a great deal, this program has, and it's been very successful. Any other board member have a question for Arden? Okay, we will move on to discussion items, Corporate Yard Building Update.
I was gonna put that on.
I'll let you say it, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, we have a closed session item to discuss a property. And I would propose that we do that. And then we have the presentation on the Corporate Yard Building on Tuesday, if you would be inclined to do that.
That sounds good to me.
All right, Brian, we'll have that ready for you on Tuesday then, okay.
Okay, thanks. And we're gonna go this afternoon into this closed session, correct, today?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, so item number six, Regional Mission Springs Water District Regional Water Reclamation Facility Update. Do we have another, I see Steve was.
Steve is here, yes, like Danny informed me, there's a lot of action here, so we thought it would be appropriate to have Steve here to really go through some of this. You're gonna start hearing and seeing a lot more in this report. There's gonna be a lot more activity, Steve, with that, I'm gonna let you have the floor.
Thank you, General Manager. Madam President, thank you for having me today, and Directors. First, I'm happy to report that we have completed the design for the treatment plant. So we do have our final design plan specifications and engineer's estimate that we're ready to move forward through and put out to bid. We still have a few items that we're working through to get the bid package ready. And one of those that we spoke about last month was the, this pre-qualification threshold for any contractors that want to bid on the project. They have to meet a minimum criteria to make sure we get a competent contractor that meets all the requirements for a job of this scope, of this size, and of this cost. And the other item is working out a pre-negotiated cost for certain pieces of equipment. There are about, there are three pieces of equipment proposed for the treatment plant that are from a specific manufacturer. And we're doing that, for instance, for the belt filter press. And we want to make sure that we match the belt filter press with the same manufacturer that we use for the Horton wastewater treatment plant belt filter press, so that we can use the same common parts and only have one set of parts on hand. In addition, it's more efficient so that our staff is already up to speed on how to maintain and what the common components are if they should fail. So there are three pieces of equipment, like I mentioned, so we're working with the vendors now, or rather, the district's subconsultant, AECom is working with the vendors now to get those, get those costs locked down, so they're the same for every vendor proposing on the project or every contractor. In addition, last month, I reported that we submitted our groundwater monitoring work plan to the regional board for consideration. And that outlined the details of installing three monitoring wells around the proposed wastewater treatment plant, that would be one upstream and two downstream to monitor background ambient water quality. And we have, that needs to go through approval with the regional board, I spoke with regional board this week, they're finishing up their review now, and we expect comments, if any, back next week. From that point, we would be able to finalize the package, put it out to bid, and then bring that back for board approval to install those monitoring wells and begin monitoring the background water quality prior to the treatment plant going operational. As you may recall, one of the requirements on our waste discharge permit with the regional board was that we have one year's worth of background water quality data prior to us having any affluent disposal or going operational with the treatment plant. So that's coming in right online with the proposed schedule. Now, the SRF update, we reported last month that we were working on a tech memo to the state board to change our SRF application to include the septic abatement portion for the houses within Area M2. We completed that tech memo and submitted it to the state, and they accepted it and had no additional questions and are moving through with processing that. And there were a couple of things to highlight in that, and we're expecting a total cost increase of 1.5 million to take on the septic abatement work under the SRF, but it will ultimately result in an additional $8 million in grant towards the project. So there's gonna be a net gain of $6.5 million in grants by taking on this abatement work. In addition, we had our sequoia consultant who prepared the environmental impact report for the project. He prepared a statement saying that, or confirming that the impacts associated with the septic abatement were already accounted for in the original EIR analysis. And that's a key piece, because if they were not included, that would have resulted in additional delays with this SRF process. So the state board is reviewing that information now. And another thing, we've made it to this point, is the state has started their credit review of the district, and the Director of Finance, Mr. McQ, he was able to get us all that information very quickly, and we turned that back over to the state just yesterday for their consideration, so right now, our application is complete. And they've started the credit review process, and as soon as they confirm that, yes, the district is creditworthy and we can give them this amount of money and the state is comfortable that we can pay that money back, they'll give us a draft funding agreement. I think we're still in that six to eight week window to get that draft funding agreement, but those were the kind of the threshold steps we needed to get through to get to this step in the process. And lastly, I'd like to report on the easement. On January 27th, I was able to attend the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, they have a joint projects review committee meeting with state and federal wildlife agencies and with the local Coachella Valley Conservation Commission. And we, I was able to present on our request for an easement along Little Morongo Road and 18th Avenue. And that's to get, as we're coming south on Little Morongo Road from Dillon, we need to cross from one side of the street to the other. My apologies for that interruption, we need to cross from one side of the street to the other, but there's no existing right of way to get from one side of the street to the other. So we're requesting for a 30 by 40 foot rectangular easement on the southeast corner of Little Morongo Road and 18th. The resource agencies were receptive to us, to giving us such easement, but there were a few things that we needed to check. The first and most important was verifying that this was in an existing disturbed area. So what we did following that meetings, we had our survey crew go back out and set stakes in the ground to identify where this easement area was. And it is in fact 100% within an existing disturbed area where vehicular travel occurs quite often. In addition, one thing, a few things that the resource agencies requested that the Conservation Commission look into was how the property was originally purchased, to make sure there's no limitations on issuing an easement for a utility or to a utility agency. And also confirming if there wasn't already a setback on the conservation, or excuse me, wasn't already a setback provided to allow for this type of easement for utility purposes. So that is, that's all I have to report today.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, that is, that's a good report, thanks, Steve, questions, yes, Randy?
Yeah, a question for either Arden or Matt. On this $8 million grant where we have to spend 1.6, am I confusing projects or is this the one where we have to do, like, 80% of the homes in a certain area have to be abated, the septic tanks to get that money?
Yeah, well, we have to do the work on the property, Matt, do you want to explain that?
Okay, now, my question is, I understand that part. Do we have a better feel for that 80%? For that 80% than we did a couple of months ago when we talked about this?
I can I can handle that one, uh, uh, General Manager, uh, Wollum, um. That was one of the options was if we didn't want to take on the abatement portion ourselves. Then the district would have to commit to to, uh, bathing 80% or having the customers abate 80% within the first year. Um, we didn't want to put ourselves in in that predicament, so we agreed to take on that work as part of the district's construction portion. So now there's no time, there's no time limit. We will do it as part of the construction project.
And in other words, in other words, Randy, we're gonna connect everyone, so it's. You know, it's it's it's. It, we're gonna end up with more flow and more customers in in that area, but. You know, we also will have the treatment capacity.
Which we're basically knocking on their door saying, look, it's it's a completely free hookup for you. Because we're doing our part and the the onsite project. So that's, I mean, how do you, how do you argue with that?
We don't know. We'll, I'm sure we will have somebody that will argue.
That's how AD, I think it was AD 11 was like that. Everything was paid for because the grants would pay for it back then. I guess there's grants now that will pay for that. There hasn't been for many, many years.
Exactly correct. That that changed. Uh, what did they say, Steve, about two years ago? That that restriction changed?
I don't recall, but it it was recent because when we entered into this SRF process, we were under the same impression. Which is why we left it out of the SRF application to be to begin with.
There's a federal. That's why. There's an EPA. The the issues in the past, as as President Wright was speaking to, is we've done four. Abatement projects in AD 11 and and also AD 12, but those were done with federal money, and there's an EPA connection which is federal. To this money, this, which is why they're throwing this at us in a sense.
I just wanted to clarify, what area will all those connections be made?
Um.
Area.
Those Palmas, I believe.
AD AD 15.
Okay, that was, uh. Over off of bubbling wells.
Right.
Okay. More specific, bounded by bubbling wells to the north, Dillon to the south. Um, sorry, bubbling walls to the east.
My division.
Um. Yes, sir. And you have Camp Camino Campanero to the north, Dillon to the south, bubbling walls to the east, and Ebony Manzana to the west.
Yes.
Thank you.
It it actually is quite. Fortunate because this area is what you call severely disadvantaged, so. Getting the funding to do that is very appropriate. And it was.
I think so. That'll help us get it connected too.
Won't cost them anything then.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Um, I don't see.
I have, I have one question, just, just. Uh, I got a note here, uh, the draft funding agreement that you were mentioning, that was, uh, sounded like that was for the grant that, uh. Director Duncan was just talking about. Is that right, or is that something for the financing for the entire project?
It would, it would be for everything. The SRF package, the the full, it would be. It would, that's gonna detail how much loan we're taking on, the district would take on, and how much grant we would be getting out of the. Uh, small community wastewater grant and the groundwater grant program. So it will have all three components, so the grant and the loan all rolled into one package for the district to consider.
Okay, so that, does that mean that, um, we're not going to the market with a bond issue or? That, so. That's just a direct loan from the state? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, and and they've advised that the current loan rate is 0.9%. Directly through the state.
Very good. Thank you. And by the way, thank you, everyone. That was, uh, great work since I've been here, and it sounds like you built this thing from the ground up, although I know. You have been working on this for decades. Um, this is, uh, I feel lucky to be here right now. Thank you very much.
No, thank you for that comment. Okay, we will move on to item number nine. No, excuse me, consented consent agenda. Anybody? Yes.
Sorry, Danny Friend had something to add.
I just, I just wanted to remind you, this is something that, and thank you, Dory, that's something that Arden era talked about, what what the actual update would be, and. If you recall, two months ago, when we started having Steve come into these meetings a little bit more frequent. As a reminder, there's a lot happening. Typically, this this. Update in all updates, for that matter, are are updating on the previous month, what took place in January, and and this project is starting to take shape so quickly. And so much, so many things are moving. That you're hearing of things that just happened in the last four days, so it may, it may come off weird as this didn't happen in January, but that's our goal. Is a lot happening. We plan to transition once we bid this project commence construction. To to use this project as an update with construction video where we can, photos. And it will continue on with this update until probably the next two years when we commission the project, so. Just wanted to remind the word of that. So, thank you.
Danny, did you like have your hand up or something? Is, did I miss that? What does it look like? Where is the hands up? Would somebody put a hand up so I can see what? You were doing that. Okay, sorry. I thought you were talking about the other thing.
No, I'm sorry.
I can see that. Okay, sorry, I missed you.
One more I just thought of, um, how far from the, uh. Are these monitoring wells? Are they on the property that we currently have? Or are they gonna be farther away or?
Uh, so that's a great question, Director Grasha. Uh, that's something we propose to the regional board is to keep all three monitoring wells on our existing. Um, you know, at property down there, um, start, starting at Little Morongo and 20th. All the way up to the north side of the treatment plant, so we did offer an option to go outside, but that would create additional delays. Um, but that is an option, um, but we are proposing to put them all within our existing property limits.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Steve, we're waiting for that response still, correct?
Yeah, I expect that, uh, in the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you.
I wouldn't think they would object to that, but we'll see. Okay, sorry.
So, okay, so now we'll we'll move on to the consent agenda. So I did see the hand, Randy, that you had a little hand up in your corner there. That's what it looks like when when somebody, okay, well, I'll try to. Remember to look for those, you guys. Give me. Give me time to get used to the hand raising thing, but otherwise I can see you all, so that's good. Okay, so, uh, anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes of the registrar demands? Okay, seeing none, we will take that up on on Tuesday. So directors reports, wow, upcoming events and directors reports. Let me see, anybody want to do theirs today's? No, wait a minute. I gotta get the page here on the agenda so I can see what I'm doing. Um.
Tuesday, if you don't mind, because we got.
Tuesday, okay, uh, Vice President Martin, Tuesday too or Monday or today? I mean.
Not Monday.
I know, or today, I mean.
Tuesday for me.
Tuesday, okay, Director Sewell, do you have any reports?
I have nothing to report this month.
Okay, and Director Grasha, will you have any reports?
Uh, I I don't know. I I do have a, uh, one more thought. I wanted to wrap up on the, um. Idea of meeting again in the boardroom prematurely.
Okay, you know, we do that, it's your comments. It's almost here.
Okay, I didn't know if they were on their agenda this month.
Oh, I don't know if they are or not, to tell you the truth. I didn't. But that's okay, um.
They are there.
They are, okay. So we'll do all that on Tuesday, on number nine. Okay, general managers report.
Okay, uh. I want to, I want to, uh, you know, I mean, I complimented my staff this week, especially at the manager's meeting. Um, for doing what I think is a really good job of this monthly report. It's, you know, it's quite extensive. Uh, it brings up a lot of things, so I'm just gonna add a couple of things here. The thing that wasn't included here. And Steve may be able to help me a little bit, was that we won an award. For our well 33 solar foldable tank electric system project where. Uh, we went, well, you know, if you recall originally. Uh, they came out and gave us, I think, $1 million, and I put together a sort of a series of. Of testimony there that would that allowed us to get about six people in the list. And that went from 1 million to 3 million, over 3 million, almost 4 million, I think, and. That's gonna give us, uh, savings of maybe 2, $300,000, hopefully $300,000 a year for 30 years. And the American Society of Civil Engineers. Um. Gave us an award for outstanding civil engineering project here, and I don't know if you can see that or not. It's kind of clear, so.
It's written backwards.
Yeah, oh, okay.
There you go.
Anyway, I wanted to let you know that we did win this and something else we can put in our trophy box in our new building.
Oh.
We gotta remember to put that in there. Um, and with that said, uh, I'm gonna let Victoria talk to you about. Um. The public outreach information, but I only want to make one more comment, and that is, uh, I want to remind you again that. The week of May 8th, I have to fly back to, uh, South Dakota. So, and you can see that it is, uh, a a necessary trip, not, not, most people don't just travel to South Dakota. For a vacation.
You do.
I do.
Not in the winter time anyway.
Pardon me?
Not in the winter time anyway.
No, it was zero degrees there when I talked to several people this week. In fact, it was below zero. Um, okay, Victoria, did you want to comment on the?
Sure, I can go through the public affairs report. Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board. Um, as you'll see, so we're on page 127 in the packet, um, item number 10, page 127. Um, so for upcoming events, we did hear about the Senior Inspiration Awards and. Um, which is organized by Riverside County Supervisor Manny Perez's office. Um, it will be held virtually. This year, and they are working with the local news channel to try to see if they can actually get it to air. Um, on TV, so whether that would be NBC Palm Springs or KESQ, we we don't know at this time. Um, but as soon as I have more information, I'll make sure to, uh, work with Dory and and get that out. Uh, to the board. Um, also this week, um, it didn't make the report, but, um, the big heart awards. Um, put on by Desert Hot Springs Rotary will also be held in March on the 25th. And that will be held, uh, via YouTube, so. As we firm up more of these details, um, as I said, I'll make sure to work with Dory and and put that on your guys' um. Schedule or upcoming calendar that she sends out. Um, for outreach efforts, um, C V Water Counts, the Water Counts Academy is in full swing. Um, we just had our second, uh, course today. Um, it's a five week. Um, every Thursday about, you know, hour and a half, and so we had our second meeting today, and we have about 45 individuals throughout the valley who have, uh, registered. Um, and it's been going pretty well so far. We also have three members of the MSWD staff that's participating. Uh, last year, Basam Alsmar was, um, an attendee. Uh, for the academy, and this year we have April Scott, uh, Carol Moran, and Lisa Pelton also attending. Um, you'll also find in the report in the appendix, um, the outreach, uh, or the digital report for the C V Water Counts. You'll also find our MSWD digital advertising report for the month of January in the appendix, and, um, what you'll see there is a report mainly of the two types of ads that we run. Um, those are the Google Ads, which are the ones that you'll see, um, almost on any sort of website, um, you know. CNN, MSN. Um, any website you might be going to, even Home Depot, they have those little ads that pop up on the side, so. Our emphasis for the Google Ads this month was, uh, value is our mission, and that's a a mockup of the same as the billboard that we have. As well as the January newsletter, so encouraging individuals to go ahead and click on that and and direct them back to our website. Um, we had, uh, an emphasis on essential workers, and that featured a picture of Rolando. Um, from water production, which is similar to the previous billboard that we had. Um, and then also just a hydration tip with, uh, an MSWD branded water bottle. Same thing for our Facebook and Instagram ads. We have three total ads, uh, the same graphics that we've just repurposed, the value is our mission, the water bottle hydration emphasis. And, uh, encouraging individuals to go check out our newsletter. You'll also see, I'm sorry, yes, President.
Go ahead. Sorry, I thought you were done.
Oh, taking a breath. You'll also see in the appendix, the social media report for the month of January. Um, as you'll see here, um. From January 5th to February 1st, we did have a good amount of, uh, people reached through our pages. We are boosting quite, uh, we've, um, switched, um. Social media companies, and so, uh, with this, with this company, we've definitely seen a lot more return, um, a lot more targeted page boosting. Uh, for our, uh, posts. Um, and then we've also started utilizing, which I reported on last month, um, Twitter and Instagram also as a means of reaching out to our customers. And the way that when we run any of these ads, we've geo targeted them, so that way anyone who's within our service area would receive one of our ads. Um, also. Can you guys still hear me? I've had weird internet glitches all day. Am I still good?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Um, also for conservation, um, we've processed so far 13.
Did we lose her? We can't hear you. Can you hear us?
She's to be frozen.
Yeah, now we've lost her. She's froze on the screen here.
As soon as she asked, of course, right?
Yeah, yeah.
She jinxed it.
Is she in the office or at home?
No, she's at home, Steve.
That happens with the wireless connections.
That happens, yeah. All right, well.
Okay, it will, well. Maybe she'll, when she, when she come, when she gets back in, let me know if she can.
She might be.
I guess we'll just have to keep moving forward. Oh, Arden, you're still, your report, go for it.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
All right. You got dropped or something.
Yeah, I apologize. Uh, nonetheless, I'm just hoping we can reach out to more commercial customers, um, as the businesses are starting to reopen, and lastly, uh, what we introduced in the January newsletter was our indoor water conservation kits. Um, and we had 10 individual people reach out. Um, they are mailed out to the customers free of charge. Um, they include, um, a sink aerator, a kitchen faucet, um, aerator, a shower nozzle, um. Leak detection tablet, so it's a fun little indoor, uh, conservation kit, and they are free and available to the public. Um, so we're gonna continue pushing that as well. Um, and for the sake of internet connection time, um, I am available for any questions.
Any board members have a question for Victoria? Okay, thank you, Victoria. Good, good job. Okay, Arden, are you, uh, it's still your reporter?
Yeah, I know, I might announce that, you know, my, that that I was gonna have to go back to South Dakota, uh, the week of March 8th, which means I might miss our study session. Uh, but again, we could do it virtually, I guess, right? So.
You could, no.
Um, and so I don't have anything more.
Okay.
Quite a complete report. Um, for a monthly report, this is fairly. Barely complete. We'll, we'll elaborate on some more things next month and.
Danny has a question.
Danny, I see your hand, Danny.
Arden, you may not have seen my text, but I wanted to remind you of our conversation about the odor complaint from last month. Did you still want to cover that?
Sure, what, do you want to cover it? You want to bring it up?
You let me know, sir. I'm glad to do it.
Go ahead.
That is, that the item for the odor complaint that we received last month is in. Is in the general manager written report. Uh, we just discussed, we just bring a little bit of attention to it, and. We did have a, an an item that wasn't normal for us, where we had to place some sludge. To dry in our old asphalt beds. And they were about 99% completed, ready to dry up and. And be hauled away. And when I say it's not normally, it's not normal, because we had to put them there because of an upset in the process. So, doing so was good. It dried. We had no issues, but the recent rain that we received. Uh, wet the upper crust and it somewhat went septic, and that's what caused the odor. So as soon as we had that complaint, we immediately took action. Basam, his team met at the, at the wastewater plant, and they had it offsite, I think, within a day and a half, two days. So, it it has been dealt with. Just wanted to go ahead and bring attention to that that was brought up last month.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I did flag that with the tag, but I forgot to, it must have zoomed right by it.
No problem.
Thank you, thank you, Basam, and thank your, your crew too. Okay, next step, uh, next, next item is financial report. Matt, I think that, unless, Arden, you want to start out?
No, well, just, uh, while Matt's getting, uh, ready here, um. He's, uh, he's not gonna be here on Tuesday, so we wanted to be sure that we, that we. Got his report in today, so, okay, you will get to the report. Matt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Arden. Thank you, uh, Madam President, members of the board. Good afternoon, um, a quick summary of the financial, uh, report through November 30th, 2020. Uh, this is on page 156 of your packet. Um, the summary sheet that we usually review each month. The top left quadrant. The summary sheet that we usually review each month, the top left quadrant, third column from the left, difference between budget and actual. You'll see some large numbers in there, one of which is operating revenue is 2.2 million dollars ahead of budget. We discussed this as part of the mid-year budget review process. So nothing to be surprised about here. It's as expected, and obviously we've since adjusted the budget for that. Same reasoning on the three lines down, non-operating revenue is 4.2 million dollars below budget, a negative variance. That is totally related to the grant timing. But obviously, with the information about the SRF package that Mr. Ledbetter gave earlier, that grant timing is now going to happen, so chances are that will be in next fiscal year. When we prepared this budget, it was in, in this fiscal year. Still a very strong debt service ratio of 9.77. Investment returns are minimal, but as expected, 0.05% with the markets in the shape they are now. We totally expected those numbers to be that low. And again, as, as Mr. Ledbetter alluded to, we have been in contact with SRF. We have submitted a lot of additional information to them to further the credit review process, and we'll continue to answer any questions that they may have and provide them any other information as soon as we can. We have had some accounting challenges. That's part of the reason we're going over November financials instead of December, which we normally would. But we are now getting past some of those hurdles, and we'll be back up to date at next month's board meeting. The new W2 reporting with the COVID pandemic has brought on a lot of new reporting requirements. We've also been making a lot of IT changes in the finance department, and so working through those, so. Kudos to Arturo and his staff. They've been working very hard to keep everybody up to date. We are a little bit behind, but we are in the process of catching up, and we'll be caught up by next board meeting next month. That concludes my report, and I will answer any questions I can.
Yeah, I've got a question. Unfunded liability. I know that, can you tell us how much we owe in unfunded liability? What's the grand total? It used to be around 5 or 6 million. What is it, what is it now?
Yeah, it's still hovering around 6 million. It'll be in the audit report that was presented last month. I don't have that number in front of me, but it is somewhere in the 6 million dollar neighborhood.
Yeah, so, okay. My question is, and how much do we have a, I think it has to be an eye line item in the budget now, correct? Is that true?
Not in.
What was it? There was something that had to be shown somewhere?
Not on the budget, but on the balance sheet, again, included. It is now disclosed on the balance sheet of the district.
Okay, do we have a, do we have any percentage of what, what ratio type do we have in savings for that? Or how does that work? How are we doing that now?
We don't have any money reserved for that in our reserves. We are currently about a 70% funded status. So even though there is a 6 million dollar unfunded liability, that is the 30% that is unfunded. That's not a very bad place to be, especially relative to other county and state agencies. But coincidentally, Perres is now offering financing that we can start to pay that down. So that is part of what's being considered in the market financing that will be happening in the next quarter or two. That will be financing some of the other large capital projects that are coming up. We might be able to include that in that financing, which may be a good move, as low as interest rates are right now. But that's part of the process that we're gonna go through, and, and the financial consultants will weigh in on how good of a decision that is.
Okay, good. We, I'd be curious to hear about that. That sounds like a good, might be a good deal there. Okay, yeah, 70% is not bad. It used to be 80%, right? I mean, years ago, I remember 80% was optimum. But I know a lot of organizations are, you know, really low. They aren't even close to 70, so it's, it's tough out there. Okay, thank you. Director Grasha, you have a question?
Ah, following up on President Wright's question. Can the, I, I assume this is, I'm answering my own question here, because it's obvious it would have to be part of the, any future rate study would include that different scenarios for meeting that obligation over the next, whatever period of time is required to get there. You know, I, I think 100% is better than 70%. But like, you know, I don't, I don't want to get too far out in front of that, because I don't know all the details. I just know this is something that, I was actually literally in the room when the first time 3:50 was proposed at a little town in Orange County, when nobody knew what it was. It was presented to the council as a new plan, a new, a new plan for the cops. Nobody, nobody really knew what was, what, what, what it meant. And here we are, all these years later, and starting to fully understand it, and I don't know that it would have been approved or adopted then. They, the unions had in my view, taken advantage of a bunch of simple guys that were serving on city councils back then. I was sitting in the room with five city council members and the city manager when the sergeant came in and proposed it, and they were all like, yeah, it sounds good to us. That's how simple that got passed, and.
Well, I know that, yeah, there's a lot of agencies that have 100, I think Palm Springs got 100 millions, a couple hundred million, something like that. But I like that, that program, Matt, that you were talking, I think that, I think that'd be cool. And 100% is kind of ridiculous, only because that would, we'd have to, everybody'd have to leave at the same time, you know, to have to.
That's true. I don't know, I don't know how.
Anybody else have a question for, for Matt?
No comment, but you're correct. It's, the optimal is to keep approximately what we have. I mean, we're close to what would be optimal for an agency our size. You don't want to pay it all off right now, okay?
Yeah, there's no reason to, because all of you are not gonna leave us all at the same time.
Well, it means they wouldn't have your money. It wouldn't be an efficient way to, to, it wouldn't be an efficient decision or to operate. Okay.
Okay, thank, thank you. District Council report.
Sorry, just had to unmute. So just briefly, some of the items that we've been working on are, as you know, representing the district in the master meter litigation, also defending the district in the Padilla class action case. We are continuing to represent the district in the Sigma lawsuit against DWA and DWR. We've assisted, recently assisted the district with Public Records Act request matters. We prepared the agreement that was addressed today in the study session regarding the Desert Willows Project. We assist the staff on contract-related matters and provide day-to-day advice on labor matters. We've also provided some advice to the general manager regarding some districting questions, given that we're, we're in the new year. And then also advising the district on COVID-19 policy questions. So that's my report.
Thank you. Director's comments. Director Grasha, since you already have one that you wanted to talk about. You're, you're muted?
All right. I wanted to commend staff, the general manager and everyone involved with the general manager's report. I, I, I'm glad he mentioned that it's something, some things have changed in that report, because I was thinking to myself that I didn't want to sound like I hadn't been reading it up to now, because I had, and, and, but I had noticed it seems to be, it seems to include a lot of things that may not have been included before, and I'm very grateful that, to get a full sense of what seems to be going on over there. You know, throughout the month, so the, the report is definitely showing signs of improvement. I wondered if we could also maybe add to the agenda for Monday discussion, closed session discussion regarding that desert water.
You went mute, Steve, for some reason.
I, I'm sorry. I, I wanted to ask that we add to the agenda for Monday a closed session item to discuss desert water lawsuit. I have some ideas that I would like to share with the board. And, you know, I, I, I wouldn't expect any great movement on it, but I would like to throw out some thoughts. And if so, if that's something you're considering, that'd be great. Also, that's it. Thank you.
Steve, just a point that you should be aware of, the meeting is on Tuesday, not Monday.
Okay, thank you. I'll look at that.
Okay, Vice President Martin, you have a comment?
Yeah. It's a, it's a relatively minor thing, but is anybody familiar with Priority One Coachella Valley? It's a nonprofit organization that was formed about a year ago. The, the goal of which is to bring a new four-year University of California campus to Palm Desert. And I was contacted by Jan Harnick, who asked me to sit on, on their advisory committee. And if anybody has any information about that, or any, any comments, want to open up a line of communication on that subject, I would appreciate it, to keep me informed from your perspective. That's all I have.
Yeah, that's great. That, that was really great that she asked you. That's a, it sounds like it's.
Yeah.
Okay. Director Duncan?
I've got some little dogs barking out my window here. I'll have to do it Monday.
Tuesday. Tuesday, Tuesday. Okay. Director Sewell?
No comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I don't think I have any today either, so we will be going into closed session. I will turn this over to John Pinkney, your attorney, to tell him what we're gonna go into closed session about.
The board's gonna go into closed session. The first item is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency-designated representatives are the board president Nancy Wright and vice president Russ Martin. The unrepresented employee is the general manager. And then the second item is conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. And the property is 7.51 acres at 14866 Palm Drive in Desert Hot Springs. The agency negotiator is the general manager, Arden Wallen. The negotiating parties are MSWD and Lee Woo Kuhn, and Take Young and Lee Chang Sun under negotiation are pricing terms.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, Mr. Pinkney, you're doing the negotiation item first?
That's correct. And so Arden will join us for the first item, and then he'll step out. He won't be part of the closed session on the second item.
Okay, so we're gonna do the property first, then, right? Okay. And Brian will be in on that, too.
Okay, hello, welcome back.
Oh, the, the meeting is on Tuesday, not Monday?
Correct. Monday's a holiday, President's Day.
Oh, I can't keep track.
When you come in Tuesday, Arden, there will be a bunch of boxes in your office. Don't read into that quite yet.
Should I go down to U-Haul or something, and, you know?
Yeah, you might want to take Tina's picture home tonight. No, we're okay. So everything's cool. It went well.
Okay, good.
And we can't, we can't vote now, but we have to wait till Tuesday.
Yeah, so, so we're just reporting on a closed session now. Are we able to do that, Dory?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, so the board met in closed session, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, agency-designated representatives, board president Nancy Wright and vice president Russ Martin, unrepresented employee, general manager. There is no reportable action taken on that item. Conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property 7.51 acres at 14866 Palm Drive, Desert Hot Springs. Agency negotiated, general manager, Arden Wallen. Negotiating parties, Mission Springs Water District and Lee Woo Kuhn and Take Young and Lee Chang Sun under negotiation pricing terms. There was no reportable action taken in closed session. That concludes the report.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it, guys. Have a safe weekend. Have a fun, long weekend.
Yes.
Take care of themselves. Me, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.